I'd like to call to water the Kentucky Regional School Committee Business Meeting for October 19th, 2021. Roll call vote. Emily?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Marie?
Here.
Wayne?
Yes.
Dick?
Here.
Aggie? Joanna Lancher is unfortunately not able to come and Chris Martin, Aggie will be. Before we start, I just want to reiterate again, Robert, rules need to be followed. You need to be recognized by me before you speak. No talking over each other, please. Be polite, respectful to one another, no name-calling, focus on the issues. And here we go. Can I get a? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Simu?
Second.
Is there any discussion? So I just wanted to say the school improvement plans that we read, I thought were excellent. I'm really happy that everyone's kind of focusing on the same things and you all did a really good job. And the social emotional learning part as well is very important, so thank you. All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Great, thank you. So committee updates, Wayne?
Yes, we signed all the warrants tonight, so we're up to date.
Okay, great. Emily?
We met a week or two ago to go through some of the results of the MCAS and AP tests. And just to sort of talk to Mr. Conway about the layout of some of the slides and those kinds of things, so that it was as comprehensible as humanly possible. And I just wanted to say that as it came, as it sort of comes up in conversation tonight, I want to encourage everybody to be sort of thoughtful when they're making these comments about the scores. There were definitely some things that, as the meeting came up, we were like, oh, what about this? And that it's, the administration has an awesome plan that is, they're going to present in terms of professional development and action plans for some of the more concerning scores. But that in a small district like ours, that we want to just be thoughtful about how we phrase our questions and comments, so that they're not targeting specific staff members.
Thank you. Dick, policy?
Yes, we have A-D-E-L-H, and I would say most of those are short compared to the 100-plus that we've dealt with with the others. We will be meeting, I believe, the 29th, that's a Friday, for three hours. And then November 12th is also a Friday. Both are at the Bagnell Conference Room, which works out perfectly. And that's a long one from 8 till, I think, 2:30. And we're going to see how far we can get into that. I did make some comments on the A, but I don't think that's completely refined, or we would have voted on that tonight. So we will firm that up, and if anyone else has any questions, I think someone had a question about an abbreviation. And it was an organization that stores information from which Cory can use them as a resource to find out what's the good, bad, and ugly of a person. But I think that was the only comment I made. The rest of them were kind of type all kinds of things to just clean it up.
Okay. Thank you for all your work on that. Emily? And Dr. Reed? Communication, Joanna is not here, so we don't have an update for that.
I cannot.
Oh, okay.
So we're looking still at the Blackwell Communication. And I think that will possibly implement some kind of change. But still, we have to go through all the training and learn a little bit more about it. But it will accomplish everything we were looking to accomplish at the school committee. It'll be part of the system that we use in the district, so it will be a financial cost.
Great. Thank you. And now we have a public comment. Jennifer Riordan, come on up.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Riordan, and I live in West New Bradon, Main Street with my family, my husband and our twins. I'm going to continue on the topic of food and what we're showing the children and the food choices at the page particularly, because that's what we're involved with. So first, I just want to talk about brain function and food. When our brains are not receiving the correct amount or the correct types of food necessary to maintain energy and balance, it will manifest as emotional and physical exhaustion, core memory, and mood, mood instability. The foods we eat can make or break our ability to optimize brain function. Let me say that again. The foods we eat can make or break our ability to optimize in brain function. Okay? This also goes for the children. And you can either actually operate at peak performance or not peak performance. So when, I'm going to continue on with the Lucky Charms. If you've ever looked at the ingredients in Lucky Charms, if you actually look and know the ingredients in Lucky Charms, you wouldn't even want to give it to your pet, okay? Try looking up trisodium phosphate. It's artificial. What do you think it does to our brains when we put something artificial on our brains? We cannot work at a maximum capacity. So when my two boys come home and tell me that them and one other child are the only ones that can sit still, and the teacher has to take about 10 to 15 minutes and start doing discipline and have a behavior chart, you're setting the children up for failure. If you give a child Lucky Charms in the morning and tell them to go and sit in a classroom and to learn and listen, you are setting them up for failure. And I think it really has to change, and if I have to talk about it every single week, I will. I've reached out to Tony in Food Services, and I haven't heard back from him. But I really do want to work together, because I can show you every single scientific article supporting that what you put into your body affects your thinking capacity, affects your energy level. I could go on and on. I'm not a scientist, but I guarantee you, I am extremely well-versed. I have 20 years of research of food and what it does to our bodies. And our guts, don't even get me started on the microbiome in the gut, okay? So I'm going to continue the conversation, and I also just really briefly want to mention that I think there's a real disconnect between this board and the community. I've been on the sidelines. I talk to parents on the field. They're all afraid of you. I don't want to be involved with a school district where parents are afraid, I'm the only one here to speak, right? Where are all the parents? Every single week I've been here speaking, saying something, showing that I care, showing that I care about education. I have two seven-year-olds. They don't have a voice. I have to speak for them. I'd like to see other parents along with me. I hope I can get that in public school, because I know I can get it in private schools. I know the parents in private schools care a lot about the children's education. And I really hope that I can get that from this board. I hope I can get it from this district. And I hope I can bring the community together, and I hope I can be a liaison with the parents to have communication. In the next few weeks, I would like to have a meeting with every single one of you on this board and see what I can do to make your job easier, and see what I can do to bridge any gaps, and see what I can do to make education a top priority. Because when I see the DIBL scores and my children are in first grade and they're testing at a third-grade level, and the other children in first grade aren't even at first-grade level, there's a disconnect. And I'm here, I'm willing to help, I'm willing to do whatever it takes, and I hope it can be a win-win at the end of the year. And I hope I'm still standing here at the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riordan. And next, we have superintendent news. Our student rep could not make it tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's true, our student rep could not be here tonight, but she did submit to us an update, which I'll read right now. So this is from Hannah. She says, as we are now halfway through October, many groups are kicking off, and various spirit events have proved successful. As we move into the cold of fall and winter, Kentucky students are rubbing up their creativity and drive. The ALS Cup was this past Saturday, and it was a great chance for students to get out and support soccer teams. Students are also loving to attend football games, as many dedicated fans cheer on the team, no matter how far we drive. The Fall Festival Dance was also a big hit, as we had over 300 students attend. It was truly a great feeling to be able to have fun again with everyone and feel as though nothing had changed in these past two COVID years. The dance was the perfect opener to the school year for student council and government. So superintendent, I'll leave it on this one. Yeah, outside, I have two kids that are there as well. It was done in the outside courtyard, and I asked my children, it was just rave reviews by everybody. It was very well done by the student council and government. Student Council also hopes to get underway with its Halloween lunch party in Spirit Week. We are really looking forward to hosting the exciting, well-loved events that students have missed so much. Tutoring and community service are looking bright for this school year, as the National Honor Society Group is working to run a district-wide tutoring service. There are also more community service events to offer than in the past few years. So we're happy to see students seize the opportunities in every aspect of March. All in all, there is a great sense of community pride, of community pride and joy throughout Kentucky. Compared to last year, students are now practicing much better habits and are also able to strike the perfect balance between school, work, and fun. So that again was the update from our high school rep, Hannah Linnigan. So thank you, Hannah, for that. From my end, the superintendent's news. So the vaccination thing, I'd like to thank everybody who did complete the vaccination, 511, the age 511 vaccination survey. Results, if you go onto the district website, one of COVID, go onto the district, about our district, there's a COVID dashboard. You click on that, you can see the results. What that's purpose, they're looking to, again, ramp up and possibly do a vaccination clinic, the same way they did last year. They need to know the numbers, what's in each town, so the communities that are involved, they know where, they can use the facilities, they can get the nurses they need, and they can get the volunteers they need to run parking lots, all that stuff, in addition to ordering everything. So I was able to pass that on to a policy meeting, Diane Gardino, who helped organize in conjunction with Amesbury, with Chief Birkenbush, to get that nine-town starting start. So thank you very much for that. COVID and vaccination numbers pretty much stayed the same last year, and if you can go on the dashboard, look. Last week, there was a bump up at the elementary level, and largely due to, there was a couple of events. I think there were two or three events that caused a big number of infections. So we see that blip, that's what that blip is from. So I know I mentioned this last time, but across the state, the federal food program, the supply issues are now starting to reach us. It has always been that orders would be put in on Monday, and you receive on Wednesday the food that you ordered. Now, things are ordered the previous week, Thursday before, and on Wednesday it shows up, and you don't know what you're going to get. So the cafeterias are scrambling and trying to do what they can to put the food out. Yeah, it's federal food program, this is their operations, everyone's unaware. I actually did mention the high school dance, and I believe the middle school has a dance planned as well for the 29th. I think they're going to use their courtyard and outside here, cafeteria, or things like that. So yeah, it'll be open air then on the 29th, and they're actually running theirs from 2:30 to 5:00, which I think is a good timing. So we talked about last week, Paula, about progress reports and updating parents. And I know the elementaries will actually have progress reports going out to families this month. And I believe the middle school and high school already communicated how to get on Power School and to reach out to the schools if people have questions about how to use it. Is that correct, Mr. Seymour? Exactly. So everyone there should be looped in and appreciate the work by the administrators and the teachers getting on that so quickly. Kentucky, we are partnering with Mass General Hospitals. This is, so last week, last time you heard about the screening we're going to do for dyslexia, this is different completely. Mass General Hospitals, they're going to help us with the speech deficit screening for the medical part of it, to see if there's any children who might have a medical situation that causes a speech problem. And for those children they identify, they're actually going to provide tutors for those children to work with them. And this is early on in kindergarten.
For all of our kindergartens.
For all of our kindergartens, so that's a great partnership for us to have, and provide support where that's important, it's great to meet. Also, just a final bit of information, that we did receive a $295,000 grant from the Emergency Connectivity Fund. Now, this was something that was out there. After COVID, the government became very concerned that you might have a second situation, anything. And what they don't want is for children to be put in a position where they don't have connectivity at home, and they don't have a device to use of their own. So all that money is already earmarked for, to make sure if there is another situation, that we are fully mobile, everyone will have Wi-Fi connectivity, and everyone will have a device to use. So that was a huge grant, and I'd like to just thank Catherine Page, who's our new Director of Special Technology and Information Technology, John Quiatek, who also is new to the district. He is our Assistant in Network Administrator. They worked really hard putting this together, and it was just fabulous to see this come through. And that, Madam Chair, is the news I have.
Great, thank you. On to new business. So strategic plans subcutting. This is actually part of Dr. B.'s goal. Oh, sorry.
Can you miss the presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that, Jonathan.
So I guess Jonathan just presented two things. Dan, do you want to add any part of this?
Yes, I'm definitely.
Good evening. So I was asked to just kind of provide and update on the high schools. So I just put together a few slides and a few items here to just kind of touch base about how things are going and where we are. So it's interesting to kind of hear Dr. B. read Hannah's update, the few things that she mentioned that I'm going to mention as well. We are kind of like halfway through October, a good chunk of the way into the school year. So I just have a few pictures here at the beginning of just kind of students in action, right? I mean, this is kind of what you see when you're just walking around today. I visited a lot of classrooms, and it's just really great to see teachers and students just interacting in the learning environment. It looks very different than it did last year. Like, here's a good example, where you just have sort of students in desks, in groups. You know, we were very much different than this last year, where we were just kind of keeping that social distance all the time. And this year, we're a little bit more free to just kind of like have that collaborative learning kind of situation happening. So again, there's just a lot of good student energy in the building this year. Some really neat watercolors that students are working on, turning these into oils now. So just a couple of updates on, you know, a few of the departments. I was just trying to think of some things maybe that would be worth sharing. And in our English department, we've got a few new courses this year. We're offering a college composition and a college literature class. And those are new, and those are really well-enrolled. Students seem to be responding really well to those new courses. In social studies, we have a lot of new text-based resources that were acquired by the district and have been implemented both in U.S. and world history. And there's also a new course, a new college psychology course offered in social studies. In science as well, there are some new text-based resources that were acquired by the district and are being fully implemented this year, which is really awesome. And in addition to that, we have a new college chemistry course that's being offered. And this is a, this is a funny little acronym here, GOMI. I wasn't really familiar with what GOMI was last year before, about April or May. But I've learned that it stands for the Gulf of Maine Institute. So some folks with the Gulf of Maine Institute reached out to us to see if we would be willing to kind of partner with them with some work they're doing, really all throughout this region, but really starting all the way at the headwaters of the Merrimack, all the way out into the Atlantic. All of that is considered part of the Gulf of Maine. And so it's been really awesome. Last spring and over the summer, and continuing this fall, several of our science teachers and our students are getting to work with this group. And they're doing some work right on our campus, eradicating some invasive species. If you walk between the two schools, you'll see some black tarps over some of the Japanese knotweed invasive species. They're working on eradicating some of that and doing a lot of other things. So it's been a really great opportunity. We're continuing to work with them. Our visual art department does a really great job of helping students to develop that portfolio that they need to apply to art school. One of the things they do is they bring admissions reps in from some of these art schools, and they give their feedback on our portfolios, which is great. And just like sort of across all curriculum areas, one of the things that's really nice this year is we've got a lot of alignment around the kinds of student learning goals that our staff are setting, which are really focused on collecting data and then looking at that, and how do we use that to adjust our practice? So that's really exciting to see that, and we're looking forward to how that's going to go throughout the entire school year.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I understand the college literature. In fact, I remember my literature courses quite well. What is the, what's happening in the college composition that's different than the composition being taught on the high school level?
Yeah, it's a great question. So we offer this ninth-grade writing lab that all students take, which is a specific writing course. This is very different from that. So we're partnering with the University of Southern New Hampshire, SNHU. And so we have basically aligned a curriculum to this college writing. So everybody is pretty familiar with that first year of college, where you take a college writing course. And so that's what this is. It's essentially what you would take at SNHU or at UMass or wherever you're going to go, you're going to take that first semester. So that's what this is.
Okay.
Yes?
So the follow-up on that, they take the college-level course instead of a traditional high school course that we do.
Yeah, so they can. Yeah, I'm sorry to not let you finish your question.
No, like, I kind of get it, but I think the clarify.
Yeah, so we have a four-year English requirement, right? And so this course or this combination of courses can be taken in, you know, as one of those years. It's a really nice, you know, we're doing a variety of things with early college, and those courses, they count for high school credit, they, also, you're getting college credit. So it's really nice. You don't have to do anything other than enroll in that course and come to fourth period every day and do your work. Sometimes you might have to pay that little bit of a fee to get that credit, but you know, it's a really seamless way for students to start accumulating credits. Chris?
I'll just point out that as somebody with a senior, I have both a college student and a national college, and I have a high school senior who's now taking three of these classes. I enrolled him in SNH two classes this week, and I can tell you that the price we're paying for credit for SNH two for those credits versus the price we're paying for college, very, very different, so I just appreciate that.
Yeah, so while we're talking about costs, it's $100 for the course, which, as Chris said, and any of us who have kids in college, you know that that's just like a fraction of the cost of what you pay. So, you know, it's really exciting. We added a bunch of courses this year, as I'm mentioning, and we've had an additional 100 students so far this year take those. And there's an opportunity for some students to jump in in the spring semester as well, so it would be additional. So, Tina?
And just so, it's different from an AP course. AP course, you get credit and do not have to take.
That's true, yep. So in an AP course, if you score well on that end-of-year test, then that's how you kind of access those college programs? Yes?
So if there are that many more kids enrolled in these courses, is that impacting some of the other courses negatively?
I don't think it's impacting any of the other courses negatively.
Or at least nothing that like is all in one spot?
Like, so for instance, the psychology course, we've been teaching psychology, we teach lots of psychology. We have aligned our psychology curriculum to match what SNHU is looking for, and that gives us the ability and the approval to then have students take it for college credit. So with this chemistry, right, so this is our sophomore chemistry. Our sophomore chemistry was almost already aligned, we made a few minor changes to it, and now it meets what SNHU is, you know, looking for in terms of their standard, and so we can now offer it that way. So we have, you know, looked to try to convert basically courses that we were already offering. The English is a, these are new courses, so we weren't offering a college composition course, but it's a new thing that we're offering, and it's, I don't think it's taking away from anything. It's our teachers still teaching sections of our courses to our students.
It's like, I mean, the college psychology, is it taking away from AP psych?
No, not at all.
Seeing like numbers going down in the other.
No, I mean, and, you know, that certainly could happen over time. We'll see. This is, this is the first year for the psychology course.
Yeah.
But, you know, what we're trying to do is create these opportunities for the students.
Oh, for sure. I was just curious if you noticed the impact or if it was spread across everything kind of broadly.
We still have a lot of students taking AP psychology, and we have some students now taking this, you know, SNH two version. All right. Okay, so speaking of college, these are some pictures of students at our college mini-fair. So October is college mini-fair month. A couple of these pictures I took today. We had our second one today, and there'll be the third and final one next week. So, you know, it's great, because it's hard sometimes to get time to go visit that college. It's hard maybe to go into Boston to go to that giant college fair where a lot of these come. So this is an opportunity, the colleges come right to, students come out of class for 20 minutes, they walk around, they talk, they get information, and they get three chances to do that, and we've got one more coming up a week from today.
Were these allowed last year?
They were, but it's been severely impacted. So this is kind of like one of these kind of back-to-normal kind of things. Speaking of back-to-normal, one of the things we didn't do at all last year was do any sort of off-campus trip. So we are starting to have some classes and some students and teachers doing off-campus learning. So we had an English Lit class go down to Concord. We had our Connections and Visions Program go out into the community. It's something that's really important part of what they're doing, where they try to generalize things that they're taught in the classroom out in the community. And then we've had a couple of things from our Environmental Science Group. This group is the one that's working really closely with that GOMI project, and they've been doing some testing down at our river, right here in our backyard, but they're also going down to Joppa Flats for some really cool stuff as well. So that's really neat to see. And again, speaking of off-campus learning, here we have some more of our students that are not on our campus. Mr. Schumacher still here? There he is. So David Schumacher took our, some of our band and instrumental students out to the UMass Band Day that joined up with hundreds and hundreds of kids from around, not only Massachusetts, but Connecticut as well. This is an annual tradition that, again, we missed the opportunity to do this, so this was really great. This was, I think, October the 9th. So that was our UMass Band Day, and that happened to be UMass versus UConn, the Battle of the Windless, and UMass came out ahead, which was kind of fun. We have a fall play that's going to be going on stage in a few weeks. Our concert band will be out in the community on Veterans Day like they have done in the past, and we are planning a winter concert series with, you know, the typical things you tend to see at the end of the semester. So all that's really good stuff going on there. Student government update? We had elections this fall. We're using a format where students recorded something, and then we did online voting. We used that last year. It seemed to work pretty well. We did it again this year. We talked a little bit about the Fall Festival Dance, so I'm not going to linger on that. Some community service where we supported the Reed Garant Foundation, all the schools throughout the district, not just the high school participated in that, which was really great, raised some money for that foundation and that good cause. And as was also mentioned, the student update, you know, there's more planning going on for what happens next. Extracurricular clubs and activities are also up and running. And, you know, here's just some examples of some of the groups that are meeting regularly. So again, just a great opportunity for students to get involved in something in addition to the sort of academic stuff happening during the day. You know, the math team, science team, they're going to be out competing again. So anyway, it's really good stuff, really good opportunities for students to find a niche in the school that they can call their own. So another extension of extracurricular activities, we were in the middle, actually, we're not in the middle, we're kind of in the backside of the fall season. Field hockey's been having a great season. This is a big win that they had earlier in the season. Girls Cross Country is having a really strong season as well. They went down to the Cape. This is from the Fowl of Twilight Meet, a really rare occurrence to run an evening meet under the lights. The soccer team, as again Hannah mentioned, a huge win over the weekend at the ALS Cup. One of the most amazing games that I've ever been to with this penalty kick shootout. It was something else. So that's all good stuff. And again, the season's kind of in the back nine here and heading towards the playoffs. We had a student leadership breakfast back in the month of September, which was great, an opportunity for student leaders to come out and challenge themselves to be good sports and to encourage that kind of behavior amongst their peers, you know, heading towards the postseason. towards the postseason. So it's been a lot of things exciting so far and there's, there's hopefully a lot more to come as well. So that brings us to a little bit more about athletics. I asked Mr. Thornton to just sort of join me and add a little bit of detail around some things that came up at the last school committee meeting and just try to answer some questions. So there's a few things after this slide, but I'll let Mr. Thornton take it from here for a few minutes, all right?
What an athletics program that Pennsylton has, right? Well, thank you for having me. I know that there was a lot of questions at the last school committee meeting that you had, and I heard through the grapevine that there were a lot of questions going on, so I, I went back and watched it. I don't have to be real, real long, it can be as long or as short as you want, but I tried to just go through the questions that you had and, and we can talk about whatever you need to talk about, but I, I think one of the things that I would really like to impress on people is that it's expensive to have athletics and, you know, and this misnomer that, that the district doesn't put in money to the Pennsylton athletic program is absolutely false. And, you know, just talking transportation alone, we're talking $220,000 a year that was spent on buses. Coach's salaries is around $260,000 for, for the three seasons of, of coaches. Referees that work at the fall and the winter and the spring, you're talking $60,000 for that. Equipment that I need to purchase for the programs, which could be Riddell helmets, it could be shoulder pads, helmets, there's a $16,000 line for that. Supplies that we may need for the high school, an ice machine just broke, we bought the ice machine, pucks, balls, bats, you know, you talk about those supplies, $15,000 there. Another equipment line, which we just used to purchase HUB, which is going to be a great program and they're going to have for the student athletes going forward, uniforms, you know, there's a line for that of $15,000. We have dues and fees that we have to pay for the MIAA and the Cape Band League and the tournaments that we're in, $14,000. So you add all these things up, it's $600,000 that the district is putting into the athletics department. It's not a small piece, it's not a small chunk of change. It's also not endless. So, I mean, when you're talking about user fees and what, where does that all go to? That's where it goes to. Like this is the money that's spent and this is what, this is what we're spending our money on. And just to get back, I know you guys were talking about transportation again. Transportation has been extremely difficult, especially this year. There's a shortage on the drivers, it's really created a bottleneck. We ran into it today, there was a threat today at the soccer game where I got a phone call at 1:30 this afternoon that the Triton bus wasn't going to pick the Triton team up until 4 o'clock. Mind you, we have a 3:45 game. We don't have lunch, it's senior day. You know, like these things are all happening and it's happening to us too, where I'm calling various schools saying, we have a 2:30 bus, but it's now not going to come until 3:30, and then it doesn't come until 3:45, and then we don't get to North Reading until whatever time. So these are all things that we're dealing with, and mind you again, an average bus to a soccer game at North Reading is going to cost between $400 and $500. So each trip that we make, it's, it's expensive, like these bus trips are expensive. So, I mean, a suggestion I would have, and I bring it up again, I brought this up before, is we, I really think we need to look into vans or short, you know, buses, 20 plus, you know, 20 or fewer, passenger vans that you could have, which could really help out because there's other schools that are doing this, and the prices, I think, drop down to about a hundred dollars a trip, or maybe even less depending on where you're going. And, you know, there's, there's schools that do this, they lease them, I know Nurburgring leases, they, actually, Nurburgring purchased vans, I think they bought two for $31,000 a piece. Maybe that was two or three years ago, I think they're paid for already by now, which they can use. Other schools have leasing programs, I can go into details if you want, but my only reason to bringing this up is a lot of times we talk about shuttles, and yes, we do have a shuttle, there's a shuttle that goes to the Pines, there's a shuttle that goes to Pipe Stave. That's it. Those are the shuttles we have. We, we started that years ago, I think, as a good gesture offer, because it got student athletes a chance to get up to Pipe Stave, especially the underclassmen. The same thing in the spring, we did it with the Pines. Can we do it for every single sport? Probably not. And, you know, we want to talk about equity and what we can do in those various things. I mean, there are sports teams that we have where the hockey team plays at Harville High School. You know, the swim team practices at the Nurburgring YWCA. The ski team is at the Bradford Ski Area. I mean, there, we are all over the place in a sense, but also too, do we want to be driving or providing transportation to all of these practices? Yeah?
Just asking, who drives vans, the coaches?
I couldn't hear you.
Who drives, yeah, the Nurburgring people that have the vans do?
Yeah, the coaches can drive a passenger van, as long as you're starting from your school and you're going to the event, coming back to the school, the coaches can drive those, those size vans. Now, we're not going to people's houses and we're not, that's not happening.
I was checking.
Yeah. And then, you know, I, I know you guys talked about new sports and the, and yes, some of those are very expensive, some of them are not. You know, we just added skiing, skiing was not expensive. It was $2,000 and change, I think, to ski, the bill that we got from Harville, it's, I mean, on the grand scheme of things, it's nothing. And in terms of what we charged, we brought in over $3,000. So, I mean, you might have made a little bit of money, but if you want to add a crew team, expensive. Now you're talking boats, docks, coaches, that's, that's a sport that would be extremely expensive to add if we were to host. Uniforms, I know was a big one that came up as well, so just let me finish on this because like this is pretty much my last thing, but uniforms is a big thing, and uniforms has been talked about for years and years and years, and I've been involved with it in years and years and years. And I can go back to 2016 where we finally decided that we were gonna, the district was going to allot $10,000 a year for uniforms, which we did, which was great with the help of the PAA. And what, basically what we did with that $10,000 was we tried to really equally distribute it each year. So if we bought $5,000 worth of soccer uniforms for the boys, then we tried to make sure we bought $5,000 worth of basketball uniforms for the girls, just to make it equitable in that sense. But, you know, uniforms are expensive, and I know we're very grateful, I think, now that we've put together, you know, the, the order of where we're going to buy the uniforms for now going forward, but you've got to keep in mind too, that's, it's extremely expensive still. So just to understand the rotation, for this year alone, the rotation of uniforms could cost between $53,000 and $70,000. But I think that's great and I'm glad that we're doing that, but it just, you just need to be aware, like that's the expenses that go along with these types of things. Yeah?
And one other question, or the vans, so?
The vans?
The vans.
Yeah.
So we use, our college soccer team use vans like that, right?
Yeah.
And so, but we need, did three vans to carry all the women.
Right.
So how does that work when you have a team that will need more than one van?
Well, it, well, if you're talking three vans, then it could possibly work.
I mean, I don't, it depends on the size of the team, right?
Yeah, it does. I mean, if you're going to have a few vans, you would use it for golf, you would use it for freshman sports teams, JV2 sports teams, where you wouldn't have as many players. You could send a basketball team, you know, a JV or varsity basketball team on a van if you wanted to, that would save a bus.
Right.
In the spring, you know, you're not going to send the track team on a van.
So it wouldn't necessarily replace buses, it would be for the teams that it made sense for.
It would still replace, but like the golf team could go on a van every single match.
Right, but I mean, it would set the track team, right? Or cross country, like they're not going to fit in a reasonable number of vans.
Correct. No, you're talking 100 students, but.
Right, so I, okay, that makes more sense, so thank you.
And you could get creative, I mean, the vans could be used during the day for field trips.
Yeah, no, I wasn't clear about them completely, I thought I was.
Yeah, I don't think it would completely replace, we'd still need buses, but you could strategically use them.
You will still need buses, and, and again, transportation is a big expense.
What was the total you said on transportation?
Excuse me?
What was the total you had?
I would say approximately $220,000. It's going to be a quarter of a minute.
Wayne has a question for us.
Yeah?
Mr. Thornton, you have this broken down per sport, right? So you can look at an average per sport per year, so you can take out your book and see what it was three years ago, blah, blah, blah.
For transportation?
Everything.
Oh, yeah.
So if you go across country, this is a uniform, this is what it costs for officials.
Yes.
So you have at your disposal, you could pass to these people at any given time.
If you really want to, yes.
If they want a specific for a sport, you have it.
Correct. And again, in terms of when you're speaking about equity, you've got to be a little, I mean, you all know, hockey is very expensive, football is extremely expensive, cross country's not. It's just not, so. Yes?
Just an observation, for decades, the Cape Band League has started most of their games at 3:30, and my wife has been a field hockey official, high school field hockey official for decades, and I noticed, instead of leaving a quarter to three to get someplace to get all set up by 3:30, her games now are starting at 4:30. Now, I'm thinking of field hockey specifically because the schools that do not have a light, as you get closer to, closer to November, it was pitch black at 6:30, and if you have some overtimes, but the long and short of the story is, by doing that, you have cut out significant chunks of the JV, because the varsity will get their game in, and the JV sometimes, they're lucky to get in a half an hour. And I, that's a message I would send back to the other athletic directors, I don't think that's fair, particularly if your kid's on, on the JV team, they're, they're getting screwed.
True, just a comment.
Thanks. Chris, Martin's?
Oh.
Chris, ready?
Yeah, first of all, I'm going to, I don't care, I'm going to take a second and echo what John said earlier, if anybody has a transition online, they should check out the penalty shootout from the game on Saturday night, it was pretty incredible. That is fantastic event that they do over there, it benefits charity, it's really nice. Nurburgring will let the boys come and pick up a trophy every year, it's fantastic.
Wow.
As far as this goes, this is hugely helpful, I'm sure it was very frustrating watching the video and seeing people flail around at the top of the page without fully understanding sometimes what we were talking about. I think the topic of fees came up, and I think for us, the fundamental question is how do we be sufficient, right? And that's what we have to figure out, I'm not asking you guys to that question. Can you maybe put into context a little bit where the fees fit in to the budget overall athletically in terms of how big a piece they are of you being the needs of the program?
I don't have the exact, I mean.
It's very easy, all I do is all the fees go into the revolving account, and the only thing charged to that is transportation, and it doesn't cover all of it. It's just an easy offset, because you have the budget, they'll say transportation offset by something, fees, there's no, no alignment, no money there.
So you just put it all into that bucket and it comes up short?
Put it all in that bucket and just use it for transportation and it usually comes up short, yeah.
Gotcha, sorry, what was the transportation number?
I would say.
From 225 to 250.
Right.
Thank you.
We only like about 100 or something like that.
And just for context though, that was also my understanding, that was a decision that was made, but we talked about this last time, the fees, slash the fees, so our fees are far less than anybody else's, that was a conscious decision by the school district to make that, so that we could make our athletics affordable, knowing that we were going to have to pay.
Still pay.
The costs that were still existing, that's going to come from other tax, other tax that we have in our budget.
General fund, general fund revenues, yeah.
Okay, Chris Redding, you have a question?
So, so one of the things that we were discussing was increasing fees, and from what you said, they're, just adding another $50 across the board to every sport may not be the correct way to do it, because in that case, we'd be making another $50 on the ski team. So I'm thinking that as we continue on with these discussions, it needs to look a little bit more like maybe some fees need to go up more than other fees need to stay, and rather than just across the board blanket. And I think that was part of our conversation, is really trying to understand why are we increasing fees, like do we really need to? In some cases, yes, it might be necessary, but then does it make it unaffordable for families to do that, and I know that they can apply, but I would guarantee a lot of families don't, and really scrimp and save, or the kids have to kick in money or things like that, so like I still think that we need to have a deeper dive, either as a board or as a, you know, the finance committee dives a little deeper into it or something, but I think that that was a lot of what the discussion was, is if we don't even know where we are, I mean, we do, but for us to then say, oh, everybody pay $50 more, plus we increase the family cap, is that the right thing to do? I don't know.
If I, if I may, we are going into budget season, at least I am.
You already started.
Yes, I did. But what you saw, what you saw with all the things is a philosophy. You saw Masco saying that their fees were going to cover their athletic, total athletic budget. You saw some places that charge the same price per any sport no matter what, and you saw the ones that said, we're going to make our fees to pay half the cost of the athletic budget. So I think it would probably be helpful to come up with a philosophy. If the philosophy is you want the, the fee to cover half the cost of the sport or something like that, that's something we could work on now, get it in and I could offset, create the budget using that type of methodology. So again, maybe something to think about between now and the next meeting of how you'd want, I mean, like Dan says, he's got those numbers to break it apart, and you can get an idea, you know, the average number of kids that play and the average cost of it, and that's about what it costs us, and then come up with a philosophy, I think, that we could work on going into budget season. That, that I would appreciate because it's good guidance and it's also probably a sustainable model going forward, whatever you come up with.
I have a couple more things, and then I'm done. All right, I'll wrap it up here. Just a couple of other things that I wanted to highlight, this is a really neat opportunity that is created by the Nurburgring 45 Bank, and they, they do this award for sophomores, so we had four of our last year's sophomores that are now juniors, they do a big luncheon and they haven't done that in the last couple of years, they're doing more of a drive-by, pick up your award, hopefully next year they're back for the luncheon because it's really nice. So we had four students that were recognized, Ethan Merrill, Bella Higgins, Cody Gabardi, and Luke Dennehy, three of them are pictured here, so just wanted to give a shout out to them. And then lastly, we had a couple of our students really recognized in the paper recently over the last month or so, so the Sutton Twins, had a really nice article written about them, just really good student leaders and really good student academics in the classroom and on the athletic field, so it was really nice, and I just wanted to give a shout out to them as well. And then also Kay Dennis had a great article about his work on an Eagle Scout project here in West Newbury, and so it's just always nice to, you know, open the paper and see something really nice and positive about a student in, in our school district. So I just wanted to recognize those folks, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Thank you, thanks for the time.
Very well done. I had to say, that was all within a week's time to.
Yeah, those were pretty close together, yeah.
Bring it to say.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you both so much.
Okay.
And now on to new business. First up is Strategic Plan Subcommittee. I know, yeah, if everyone read the Super Ten Goals, he has a whole goal, referring to the subcommittee, would you like to go over our strategic plan, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So what are the goals, like before we go on into strategic plan, when I came in, we did an entry plan, and the purpose of that elementary plan, go around, get information, feedback, find out what's going well, where we might improve and develop these, what is and what aren't, our strategic plan. And obviously, even with CAR's strategic plan, you're looking at situations, when that was created, a lot has happened, you have the pandemic, that's had an impact, that's had an impact on some of the things and changes and needs that we've seen. So what my hope was, what my hope is, is that we could possibly have two or three school committee members that might help form a strategic plan subcommittee, it's It's another subcommittee. But it would be nice to have that representation, so that we could collaboratively work together to get community, collective, maybe, to put together a new strategic plan.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions? Wayne, would you like to be on the subcommittee?
I will.
You would like to be?
I would, I would.
Would you like to be the chairman of the subcommittee?
Unless somebody else would like to be chair.
Well, I, you know, I think Ashley, you're not on a subcommittee yet, right?
I think I'm on to education.
Okay. Because I know everyone's on like two or three already, so if you could also be on the subcommittee, that would be great.
I can make it easy.
What do you have to do on?
So we're going to get to decide what are the areas we want to focus on, and then what would be the best, what's the most important data that we need to collect from the community, from ourselves. In other words, when you're looking at these test scores, I think test scores, but also just that data from surveys. I would create the surveys, mostly need to have, what is it that we want to hone in on as priorities for us as a district? And then I'll vet, you can help me vet through what those most important aspects are, and I can develop instruments to help measure or put out there, or get the data sets to collect. And then we can talk through before we present. I think the goal is to present it in June, or have it presented possibly, the draft in June, or where we are in June, and have it approved before the students return. So obviously, you have to approve. Don't feel like yes.
I mean, you have to go to like more meetings, basically?
Yeah.
I don't know, can I guarantee that I'd be able to go to every single meeting?
If you can't, that's okay. But for me, it's, we're just trying to get a different perspective, a different sense of eyes on it. I know, for all of us, most of us work, so it's not an easy thing. But I can send this, and whatever, so here's what I'm thinking. A call-in or virtual, I think, for this market. I have to call in sometimes in meetings, because I'm the chair. Just to have an idea. But it's, I know your job specifically is very hands-on, so it's something that you couldn't, if I said you couldn't make it, we'll let you know.
I often struggle with subcommittees, I'll say. And the members in the superintendent are very helpful. They often just, you know, here's where we're at, provide the documents, please provide the place, you can get there. Often, they're just looking for, like, how do you tell these incentives, what do you think this makes sense, kind of thing. But yeah.
And for West Newbury, I know you both are on a ton of subcommittees as well, so if one of you wants to do it, if not, I'll do it. I know, I know you're, you guys are both on, so.
It's going to be a short one, right? It's all you hear. It's not beautiful.
All right. No, I don't trust the name. But yeah, if it will be, like, there's an end time on this, we'll.
Oh, yeah. If not, I'll do it.
Okay.
It's a project, as opposed to an ongoing.
It's like, you know, we feel like our time, eight-hour days or nine-hour days of subcommittees.
Yeah, it's not like that room goes down.
Okay, thanks, everyone. So we have Wayne, Marie, and Ashley. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
So next, Pete Carlyle, to your goals.
Sure, the goals. So you've already heard about goals four. I'll start to begin, I'll just read out what they are. So the first goal is participation in Superintendent's consultancy group, Mass. As you know, there's a number of different groups that they have. A new superintendent induction program, I went through, proceeded, that was on my prior years. So this is actually a new one they started. It's a consultancy group. And the idea of the consultancy group is to find out how other districts and how superintendents are dealing with different situations. Particularly over the past year and a half, they've seen this as a high need. Try to make sure, before you go and take an action, it's been vetted, but from a whole bunch of different superintendent perspectives. Because political climates in each district are different. The needs and designs, the needs and setup of each district is very different. So my goal is to participate in that. Most of you have met Joan Conley, who I worked with for the first three years. And one of the reasons why I jumped on this was because Joan happens to be running it. She knows what, she knows very much into the adult districts. It's just a good opportunity for me to work with her and always have some bounce I need to offer along with those other superintendents. I think there are six of us total that are in that group, and represents the other regional district, urban districts, and a couple other districts similar to ours. So it's a good, it's a good group. But it's all of these, as you can imagine, when you're faced with making some, interpreting some state information, and how you're working on that state information, it's incredibly valuable to have these hours where you're sitting down with your, trying to follow. And different districts will come up with different answers on the why. And I would, what I do, I might recommend something completely different for a different district. But just having an understanding and trying to take it from a different view is really important. Second goal, so at communication, we talked about the two priorities this year that we're focusing on are curriculum and communication. So the school improvement plans, like you read through, you'll see that there is that common theme across the board. We had a meeting yesterday with all the administrators and our secondary and elementary curriculum coaches. And across the board, on everyone's emails, curriculum and communication is there. So this goal is to really nail down data-driven instruction. So my goal is to share with the principals, so they know what's expected, that what I'm expecting of myself, and thereby, this goal in particular, what I expect of them to be able to accomplish. So iReady, we found, especially last year, it was a crazy year. We reported about our iReady, how near we were relative to where we thought we would be, and where we were projected to be. So to keep on, and we saw that that was strongly correlated with the MCAS results, which we'll get to a little bit. So this goal two, which is a street learning goal, is to make sure that we are heavily, heavily focused on utilizing formative assessments. So we use iReady formative assessments in that, you notice? Give an assessment, let it be. Give an assessment, you have data meetings where you sit down, you talk with the teachers in that group about. And every single student goes over, and the students who need support, they get that support. There's a discussion amongst the teachers of how they're going to do it. And all that information drives the curriculum, how they develop the curriculum, and how they deliver the curriculum. So that is something, it's a, like I said at the beginning, a complication. I've talked about curriculum and communication. And so I put it on here because I will, I will do as I say. That's to make sure that all that happens. Of course, the gentleman to my left, everybody else is right, is a key person in that, that I, we bounce a lot of ideas off of, and he helps head quite a bit of this up. On the third goal, go ahead.
Nice question. That's kind of related. So at the high school level, maybe we're just hearing about these college, or no, and all that sort of stuff. Is anyone keeping an eye on high school students to say, like, okay, this kid, you know, he or she keeps getting A's and all this. Maybe they should try an honors course, or maybe they should bump up to a college level. Does anyone keep an eye on those kids and their achievement and their different skill sets in addition?
Wonderful.
With data-driven sources for that type of stuff?
Wonderful question, and a couple of things. One, high school is not exclusive because iReady.
Right.
But high school is working on common assessments, which is not your question, we're just putting that out there. So, yes, we've done a significant philosophical approach overhaul, where our, the high school counseling staff, I think all the secondary, is being asked to meet with children three times individually. So I think the last time, we were, they were going to the classroom, they'll talk to all the kids about Naviance, how it works, what to do. They're going to meet with every single child individually. So I actually checked in, end of September, or the very beginning of this, this month. But there are even about 80% of seniors, which did not, that has not happened. So they've really been doing a great job because of philosophical shift, the exact reason that you just said. Because you want to be able to, so there's a priority. If you're a child who is new to this school, you want to make sure that you're welcome, they're familiar with what's going on. So that is a priority. Meeting with the seniors is going to be a priority. Freshmen's going to be a priority, their transition, those are the big years. So sophomores and juniors, junior's going to be prep. Every grade's important. But those, the transition years, so 12th grade is college, 9th grade, and these, they're prioritized. So for, when it comes time for selecting courses for the upcoming year, and what do you want to do, such as early college courses, that is, they're meeting. So students are able to fill them out, but they're meeting with every single kid to look over what they've selected, look at their past history, and say, hey, here's some other opportunities, have you thought about these? But that is something that, in the past, we haven't done nearly as well as we could do. But there is also some distractions. What we shifted philosophically was, we also had took a lot off of their plate. I think you heard Mr. Smith talk about the work that they had to do dealing with mental health issues, and that consuming a lot of time, which is absolutely true. So we've helped to take that off their plate. We added that.
Social worker adjustment.
Social adjustment counselor up there, so that, that helps and gives them more time to do these, these pieces. We also, our interim assistant principal, Miss Simone, she was a guidance counselor, has been a great time, a long time chair for the whole school. She is, is, in her interim role, took over Mr. Carlson. Her job is to work with the counseling department. So she's, Matt Smith runs it. She's there as a consultant if they need help or a direction. And so she, when I have questions, means she comes to me, and it's worked so far. I've been very pleased with the progress that they've made, been able to meet with the children. Because to your point, if someone's questioning it, AP might not be what they want to do, they're not in the obvious arena. But early, early college for a lot of kids is an excellent option. And I, as a parent, completely forgot about it. And a counselor reached out to my daughter and said, hey, have you thought about doing this instead of this AP? Because an AP might be a reach. So, yeah, I think the way it's set up issue should help tremendously. Sorry, that was a really long answer.
Okay. Dick?
Let me take a look at something in the other direction. I was very moved months ago when a mom came in here and talked about her deaf child. And he reads lips. Do we have an update on what's going on with, because this, this poor young man, if we continue to wear masks forever and ever, I mean, it'll be like two going into three years, that his education will have suffered dramatically, unless you have some information that I don't have, that would make me feel less nervous about what's going on.
So I can't speak about any details. I'll just say it was, it was a death, I spoke about his son.
I thought it was a lady in a black dress, okay.
There was, there was, there was a woman in a black dress as well, but it was a different. It's the one you were talking about.
I think this is a complication for.
But my question is, are we focused on that need?
So Mary Ann will tell you. Yes, I spoke with the parent, tried to get more information, more details, as you would expect on the, and we were, Mr. Day is not here, but.
We're heading in a better direction.
Okay.
Of what we can.
I'm glad to hear that.
Understanding or anything that's going on, anything we can do, we're trying. So the third goal seems obvious, and as the senior leadership team, we meet every other week. And Ms. Nappal will tell you it is probably one of the biggest stresses in my life. It's wonderful, we're having a new building that's going to open up next school year for children to go into. There's not just, it's not simple, like, the building's there, all the new stuff's there. We need to transition people out. So we know central services is moving. But we also have to figure out, where are we putting middle school and high school, secretary, clerical crew, custodians, administrators, where are they going? So we have plans, and there's timelines, right? We have to get those adjustments made. We also have to get things ordered, Mr. Smith is not here, but get things ordered, get them into the building at a certain time. And trying to, we heard we talked about food, all these back orders and delays. Don't make this easy. It should be that we could order this in April and be ready for August. But now, we're in a situation where we're going to be ordering in December, so we can get them definitively by August. You can understand the abatement of the buildings will happen as soon as we're done school. And then demolition starts. That's excellent. That's what needs to happen. What cannot happen is demolition starts, everything stuff doesn't show up, and we have to start school. We don't have a building to go back into. So that is, with all the things we're trying to juggle, there's a tremendous number of logistics that have to take place. And so Goal Three talks about all of that adjustments, just moving in there. But also, there's the academic piece, which is another huge shift. Because the building offers new curriculum opportunities, it expands spaces that we don't have in current buildings. So we actually have started those meetings, but we want to make sure we nail down. This is our core approach. So when you look at all of the core subject areas, what we call the core subject areas, so science, English, math, social studies, and oral languages, what those are going to look like, what we're offering now, should we be offering? Are there some courses we don't need? And are there some new courses that we need to have? And then when you look at the arts, like, one of the things we talked about, we went to the arts department the other day, we have the space behind the new auditorium that's perfect for like a tech theater class, and stage design setup. That's an awesome skill for students to learn. And we don't have a tech theater. But those are, those are just examples of things. There's a lot of opportunities like that, that the new building will provide. So just also included in Goal Three, two goals kind of one. But it's, it's trying to make sure we have a very clear and direct pathway for what our students may want to do course-wise, that we still maintain increased early college opportunities, we maintain the integrity of what has to be done, and it's those electives and other options. I know right now, our students heavily, heavily, heavily engage a lot of extra science electives. And we have a large number of our students go on to do science and engineering at college. And that's excellent. It's, it's just, we want, so we want to make sure what do we have that's going to, that's going to translate really well. So that, that's Goal Three. And I told you already about Goal Four, about the, about the strategic plan.
Thank you. Could I first have a motion to approve Superintendent's goal?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, any questions? All in favor? Great, thank you. Okay, Dick, School Committee's self-evaluation results.
Okay. On the tally sheet, you'll see that I started with operations. I know that's on page two, but I think it had the fewest number of questions, and that may be the reason. The top has a question mark, and how many questions? One, two, three? And as you go down, you can see, they go from five to six, seven. So with the, when, when there is significant agreement, such as in the first set of questions, where there's all ones and twos, I think there probably will be little to no debate. If there is, please speak. The, the, in the second question, it's an interesting one. And I almost put four, but I put two instead because, it says, new members receive introductory training and orientation when they join the committee. Now, I came in for the last two years of Jack Willett's term, since he moved out of town. And I have to tell you, Mary Ann was just fantastic, because I said to her, I can recall saying, you know, I feel like I'm a year behind, what, what, and she just took me under her wing and gave me all kinds of stuff to get caught up in. And I've been forever grateful for that. But I don't know if that's a protocol for every new member. So I, for me, I put in a two. By the way, if you want to know how I scored things, I'm School Committee Member Two. I'm SC Two. I, I signed it. I have no problem with anything I've said or scored. So someone, someone had a three on that, and I think, I don't know that they were disagreeing, or whether the three should have been a four, but if you think, the person who said three, if you want to speak, please do. Otherwise, we'll move on. Okay, hearing not, nothing. Question three, we were pretty much unanimous. We did have someone that almost disagreed, but decided not to. Then we go to governance. Governance has five questions. And under governance, we have pretty strong agreement, and I believe I said, the committee policies are clear enough to date. And someone even put a one, and I think they were thinking about the ones that our committee has done, and I thank that person for the compliment. But we are not up to date yet, but we are close to being up to date. The second question, there was a blank, and then there was also a, I don't know, on that. Everyone else had a two or a one. So if either the four or the blank want to ask a question, feel free. Hearing none? Number three. Number three was, the committee regularly evaluates its progress relative to the goals and objectives they have been adopted. I put a three. I don't remember participating in that, and if I'm wrong, please correct me. There were some other people that also had three.
I think mostly everyone had three.
Yeah.
So I bet it would be something we need to improve on.
Yeah. Yeah. And by the way, what I would like to do in our discussion tonight, I would like to write up a summary of each of these. I'll pass that on, I'll email that. In fact, I'll even send one to Dina, but I was going to send it to the members of the subcommittee to add or subtract before we present that for a final vote to the entire committee.
Okay.
Question four.
So can I?
Sure.
So I think what, what number, what question three is getting at is like, we actually did our goals for twenty one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty?
To test.
Twenty twenty one. But at no point have we actually looked at those goals, and, and that's something that I mentioned when we originally brought this up, it's that unless we're actually looking at the goals we set for last year and how well we did.
Right.
You know, and, and truthfully, what this should be doing, this exercise should be driving our goals for next year, but we've already adopted them. So we're kind of in this like opposite place right now, that, you know, I, I have to admit off the top of my head, I don't remember what our goals were, but like, if some of these things should have been in our goals, it should be something that we should be trying to do.
Okay.
And I hope that we, as a committee, kind of make a priority for that.
Now, question four involves the committee members taking part in educational workshops and conferences, so I put a two, because I've done both, but there are some other people who put threes, who disagreed, and one person wasn't sure and put a four. So anyone who'd like to make a comment on that fifth, fifth question?
That is part of our goals, actually, and we will be doing that, so we will be encouraging on that if people don't agree.
But I don't, I don't think in the past couple of years we've done.
Yes.
If we're reflecting on what we've done, we haven't done much of that for the past few years.
Okay. Moving on to member relations. We actually have a number of disagrees here, so some of this could be painful for any of us or all of us. Members treat each other with courtesy and respect. I put a three, because I don't think that's true all the time. I can easily think of, of two cases, and I've decided we're not in executive session, so I'm not here to embarrass anyone, but I, I find that to be very concerning. And I, I may be a guilty party, and I'm not the least bit afraid of anyone telling me that I am just as guilty as anyone else. I put three here, because I disagreed. We do not always treat each other with courtesy and respect, and to use Dina's phrase, that's an area that needs to improve. In fact, your opening comments usually are directed in that direction.
Correct. Because we know it's...
The second question, pretty uniform. All members are encouraged to voice opinions. There was one disagree, and if you'd like to verbalize that, please do, otherwise we'll move on. Hearing nothing. Question three, members respect the will of the majority and support decisions once they are made. I think we had two threes, and everybody else was in the one, two, and almost three Question four, members share pertinent information with each other to prevent surprises and promote informed decision-making. I don't think that's true all the time, and everyone else seemed to think it was true. So I'll find a creative way to satisfy both of those numbers. Members do their homework and come prepared to make decisions. That was a definite three for me, even though the majority of people, there were two of us that said three, that we disagreed. And let me tell you what my thinking was. When I first came on the school committee, I spent three hours investigating and researching inter, inter, what the heck was that thing that was going on in Merrimack? International Baccalaureate. It's a Marxist curriculum, the first red flag, it was approved by the UN. The only thing the UN likes about the United States is the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we pay in dues. It's a Marxist curriculum. There are over 1,300 schools in the United States that have embraced this. They pay anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 a year for materials. Some pay more, because they're more, more involved in the program. In your 12 years, you never read a book written by an American author, and you never study American history. And on March 3rd, I got outvoted eight to one when I said to Greg, because I had already seen him in a meeting, I said, can we get rid of this $10,000? And the committee said, no. And that told me at that point that no one had really done a serious thing, and when I talked to the past superintendent, he wanted to do something nice for Merrimack. That was his response to, to that. So, anyone else?
Not really a question, I have a comment, that the whole reason that we're doing a self-evaluation is for the school committee as a whole to kind of understand. So although I appreciate your comments backing up your scores, I don't think that that is necessarily the intent of this exercise, and the exercise, I think, is more to identify areas that we collectively, as a group, feel that we need to focus on, and, and so I'm just, you know, part of the things that you're sharing with us are reflected by your rating, and I don't know if necessarily we need to know all of the details behind it.
Well, you see, I, I think the school committee needs to be open and honest about this, that if we're actually doing the research, we got some pretty smart people sitting around this table, and how that one could get past eight other people is absolutely beyond me. I was just absolutely flapped, I slept like a log that night. It's not the first time I've been outvoted eight to one, and it won't be the last. But if you have put something on this paper and you feel strongly about it, and it gives us a chance to grow and be better today than we were at the last meeting, and the next meeting better than we were even tonight, then I think that's worthwhile, so I disagree with your comment. Question four. Question six, members understand the role of the individual as part of the group whole, and I think there was fairly strong agreement on that. Couple of threes, and if you'd like to comment, please do. Committee superintendent relations. The committee regularly evaluates the superintendent? Yes, I think there, we were pretty almost unanimous. There were a couple of, I'm on the wrong one, I got it. Yeah, we're in pretty good shape on question one. Question two, the types and frequency of the communications are agreed to in advance. There were a couple of threes, and I think the threes were there because there were a couple of times that we came to the meeting and we weren't given that, and this happens rarely, at least for me it does, that it happened that we had something in front of us that we had not had before we came to the meeting and didn't have enough time to fully digest it, and it was a quick way of getting heartburn trying to digest it, and hopefully we did the right thing, but otherwise, I think we scored pretty high on that. Question three, everybody's in agreement. Question four, everybody's in agreement. There's only one three on question five. The superintendent informs the committee of major personnel decisions. I don't know how deeply that goes, but he fills up my email box with all kinds of stuff, and my phone rings with messages almost every day, so. Question six and seven, just about unanimous in terms of our, our agreement. Strategic planning and physical management. Question number one, a long-term strategic plan exists and is regularly reviewed. I don't think that was always true, but I think that's true now. Would anyone disagree with that, or am I just guessing?
Can you say question number one?
Yeah, I'm talking about number one. A long-term strategic plan exists and is regularly reviewed. And my question would be, by whom?
Isn't that what we're going to be doing?
Yeah, we actually have a subcommittee that's going to do exactly that. So my, my three on that could easily turn into a two. And the rest of it is fairly, fairly solid. There's another three, and if someone wants to speak on that, please do. Hearing nothing. Question two and three, just about unanimous, as well as four. There were a couple of threes on question five. The committee as a group presents and advocates the budget to the community. I think what we do in our town, individual town meetings is we support the budget that we have approved and worked with Greg on, and so I think we're okay there. If you disagree with that, please, this is a moment for you to disagree. Question six, we're in really good shape, we're all ones and twos. Community relations. Question one is, the committee has a public relations plan for the school system. I don't, I don't know about that plan. Does a plan, I guess I would ask you folks, does a plan exist? I don't know.
Is John Gilroy, correct? I mean, I don't know how much of a plan it is in the school district.
Well, I think that's part of what the communications subcommittee is working on, to be able to better inform the individual public and not just press release.
I think that, right, communications is definitely, you know, we get communications out to families, but there's also other people in the community who don't have children in the district. It would be very beneficial for them to know what's going on, so if they have been for whatever, they can share with you, they can share with the meetings, they can share with me. People have lived in to what's going on, and along there.
And I think that a further thought has to go into when that blackboard is up and running, what type of communications come from the school committee? Are they just forwards of information that you send out to the school community, or are there additional? I don't know, I think that's still work to be done.
Yeah, and that's one of the flex, flex, like, why would it give us that flexibility?
I agree with your disagreement on this one, like, I, I think that this is something we've had as a goal for our committee for, pretty much since I've been on, and we've tried some different things, maybe not as coherently or cohesively as we intended, but we've batted around a lot of ideas in terms of getting more people involved, not just getting us involved at different events, but, you know, and the most involvement we really had had was during COVID, and, I mean, not just because of the COVID issues, but I think because people didn't, like, people could come remotely, and I think a lot of, you know, parent conferences, other committees have continued to do things like that, because it allows people to engage, maybe without having to do the same amount of work, but like, you know, from within whatever their parameters are, so.
Yeah.
I'm glad to see that there's some disagreement, because I think that's something we'll work on.
Yeah, when Lisa was on the school committee, we had a discussion about picking times, days, and hours at the town hall, and then, of course, COVID hit, and then the town hall shut down, so, I mean, that, that dream went away pretty quickly. Number, question number three and four, we're in pretty good agreement. So let's move on to the last one, conduct of meetings. The very first question, committee members receive sufficient information far enough in advance to prepare for meetings, and I, I put down the three there, because it rarely, rarely, if ever happens, at least for me. If it happens to someone else, you can speak to it, but we're right on target most of the time. Question two, we're solid. Question three, we're solid. Question four, there were a couple of threes, and you certainly can speak to your disagreement on question four. Discussion is focused on issues, not personalities.
And that's me. I feel like we need to work on, again, committee relations, and, you know, talking out and being respectful, and I think, you know, staying on track, which is a lot, I have to make sure that happens. I have, I find it hard sometimes, though, when people are kind of going at each other. I don't want to interrupt them, but at the same time, they need to, what they're speaking about is important, but again, sometimes it's off topic, or it's kind of, you know, we don't want to attack each other, we want to work together, so that kind of ties back to community rela-, or committee relationships.
Yeah. And five and six are pretty strong.
Can I say something about that one that Dina was talking about first?
Sure, absolutely.
So I, I agree with what you were saying, and I know I've mentioned this before, but also, since this was on one of the other ones in terms of, like, training pieces, something like the seven norms of collaboration, might, we might do well to sit down in a room with each other and like, just hash out what that means to us, so that we can kind of, I mean, it's tricky in a public meeting, Chris, right? Like, if I'm disagreeing with Chris, I, I don't, I don't necessarily want to like air my grievance with her in a public meeting, but yes, there might be something I need to get off the, you know, off my chest, or, so I think that, that it would behoove us to find a, a venue that we could talk about the way we do want to communicate, and ideas of like, you know, self-awareness in this kind of situation, and putting ideas on the table and taking them off in our stuffful way, or presuming positive intentions, that just might reframe the way we think about that part, because we all, like, we're, we're all here because we care about this. Like, we care about kids, we're passionate about education, whatever it is that is our angle, and I don't think that any of us come to this with like mal-intent, but I think sometimes it presents itself in a way that is more...
Combative.
Yeah, and that, than I think any of us would intend. Correct.
I'm, I'm just going to say really quickly, too, I think it's important, you know, putting in just in context, if you watch a lot of public bodies, and I've been part of this one for a while, but overall, you do a good job, I think, for the most part, we're on topic, and the people are respectful. I think this stuff, the moments when we fall short a little bit stand out, because most of, the vast majority of the time, I think this body, I just want to say, it generally does, I think, a pretty good job of staying on topic. I mean, granted, I took it for two to Sean, that you report boys soccer tonight for no reason, so I'm guilty of that.
That's okay, we won't want your opinion.
But overall, I think, yeah, for the most part, you're still right, but you do, and your group does generally, I think, we're, we're guilty of transgressions here and there, but it's not, I don't think, we're kicking ourselves over too much time personally.
Five and six, we seem to be in strong agreement. I, I did make a note, just something for us to think about. I actually enjoyed not coming to the meetings this summer, but I think in, with the new school and all the things, that would be a good mistake for this coming summer, because that list on the agenda is just going to get longer and longer and longer. And so I would, just something to think about, to reconsider, even if it was once a month instead of twice a month, so that we don't get in a situation by September, we've so overloaded the agenda.
Right.
You know, you can get out of here at two in the morning and still only be halfway through. Of course, that did not happen, but I didn't...
It didn't happen this year.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to see it happen. So that's the end. Well, what I'm planning on doing is taking each of these, writing a summary, and bringing them to the committee, and I'll send Dina a copy, and then everybody else will eventually see it, and you can add, subtract, and in fact, if you like, I'll send a copy to everybody on the committee.
She was first. Okay, Murray?
So I had talked to you once before, I both maybe have another retreat, because I think there's a lot of issues.
Well, that's in our goal, so we're definitely...
Okay.
I'm already on it.
And then I just want to say, I disagree with Dick on the not getting together over the summer, because I have a real problem with the fact that we have policy that says we're supposed to approve handbook in June, and we did not. Those handbooks were handed up to parents and asked for approval of a book, even in those times, and that's a problem for me. And then I also, like, our goal should be done before the school starts, so that the superintendent's goal is to be done before, if that means having to have a meeting during the summer, I think we need to have a meeting during the summer.
I think he was saying we don't have meetings in the summer.
Oh, okay. Wasn't that what he said? I thought he said he enjoyed not having them.
Well...
No, I did. I enjoyed not having any particular extra responsibility.
He's making a statement against self-interest, yeah.
It just gave me more, more time with my grandkids, and I thank you for that, but...
But, I...
That could backfire on us very easily, particularly with all the things that are going to happen with the new school, felling... with the new school, felling these buildings, and all the challenges are just, that list is going to be like this. I don't think we can afford to have another summer like that. I think it was a great try.
I agree with you 100%.
I think it worked well, with everything that's coming up.
Yeah, everything that's coming up, we'll have to adjust, for sure.
That's right.
Yeah. And to Murray's point, we need the goals done next year, in June, or whenever it was, August, so that we can have-
Correct. So I have a request, that we actually take a look at last year's goals, and kind of rate ourselves on those specific goals, rather than this. This is meant to be like a generic kind of template that MASC provides us, but I think it's worthwhile to take a look at last year's goals and see that we did do a lot of work on some of them, but we still have more work to do, and I think if we were to get into a better cycle, and I know that you are kind of pre-planning, putting things on agendas, like-
Yep.
Have self-evaluation for this year's goals sooner.
Right.
And then that develops next year's goals, which then leads into everything else, so, you know, hopefully, I think you guys have been planning on that, and hopefully it will fit in nicely.
Well, I will send out the goals from last year, and we can do that exercise, too. And maybe send it to Nick, or, and he can incorporate it, or, I don't know how we should put it, for the subcommittee?
Everybody's got my email.
Okay. I'll send out last year's goals, and there's four of them. Go through, agree, disagree, comment, and we can incorporate it in there. That's, Ashley, you have a question?
Yeah, sort of keeping with what Emily said. I know I haven't been on long, so I don't really, like, in terms of the goals and all that stuff, but I'm not saying that everybody in this room is not here for, like, the kids and school and all this stuff, but since we're talking about goals and improvement of the committee and things like that, I do, will say that, like, just from, you know, not only my friends, but people in the district, community, whatever, nobody views this school board as, you know, being here for, like, what's good for the kids, just from, like, you know, things like here, and like, so I think that, you know, people don't come to the meetings because everybody just thinks that everybody here is, they're my made-up, like, they don't care about this, this and this, and so I just think, I just want to put in my two cents, that if we want to make these improvements or goals, and being, like, a better committee, I just don't think the community views us as a positive way of really doing what's best for the kids, and whether it's curriculum, anything, but that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Thanks, Dick, for all your work.
Thank you, Mary.
Sorry I was late, Dick, thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, school committee weighted vote adjustment, so. According to our regional agreement, section 2B, you know, we have a weighted vote, it depends on the population, and they re, you know, they redid the census in 2020, so Grohl increased, you know, basically, our populations have dispersed a little differently now, right, Mary Ann?
Right.
And so it is now, we have to vote on this, but it's a weighted vote, and-
You don't have to vote.
Oh, we don't have to vote?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Because we can't change, it is what it is.
Well-
And we can't, we don't, we can't argue with the census.
I'm not arguing with the census. I'm, I think, you can't just take this as a straight number. I can guarantee you, the weighted vote that you've been using for the last 10 years was rounded.
Well, you told him not to put-
Well, I'm just saying, now, it could be, you can do it two places. You could make Grohl's vote 1.13, Merrimack 1.12, and Westbury 0.75, if you wanted to. That's by the regional agreement. I guarantee you, that's not what they did-
No.
-in 2000.
Right.
They did a rounding thing, so I think, as long as the committee is in agreement of how you want to do it, you can do it that way, or you can back it up and change it to something rounding down to like you did before, one tenth of a point, but it's certainly discussable before you do it, because obviously you're not going to be 1.1268. So, question, what do you want to do?
I was, actually had that question when I looked at this, and I was wondering why we went that far out, because I was assuming it was going to be two digits, and that's what I would-
Yeah, I looked at the-
One digit or two digits makes sense.
I looked at the 2010 census, and quite honestly, I'm not sure-
Don't say it.
-how they got it exactly, the way they did. So I wasn't here for that, but I guarantee you rounding was involved.
Well, I mean, I, and maybe it's my mistake, but I just assumed it would go 1.1, 1.1, and 0.8 going forward.
It's a reasonable assumption, if you did what they did last time, yes.
I do. I was thinking two digits.
Well, but, so that, yes, sorry. So the, the language at the top of this, Mary Ann or Dina or whoever, is that taken directly out of the regional agreement?
Yes.
So that specifically says to two decimal places?
Two decimal places, yep.
So I think the only one that it would be, Grohl is 1.1, or it could be the rounding up, otherwise. It's a little more math than there you need to do. I mean, if that's what the regional agreement says, then I think what we've been doing in the past, I wasn't on, and I think we decided that.
It certainly didn't equal exactly 1.2, 1.1, and 0.7. It did not. I was trying, like, to figure out how they actually got to it, but I wasn't here then.
So does someone want to make a motion, or?
Well, can we? We don't have it on as an approval.
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's, the regional agreement says we have to do it, so if you do, if you're going to do it that way, and it's going to stick without any rounding or anything, yeah. Grohl will become 1.13, Merrimack will become 1.12, and Westbury will become 0.75.
All right, and that's it?
So moved?
We can't vote on it, because it's not on the agenda.
This is what it is.
It's an informational-
Yeah, it's informational.
I am in support of that.
Thanks.
Sorry, I raised my hands, and now I'm, I'm-
I still can't believe how long it took them to actually get the census.
Okay, on to the next, Brent.
So Brent's going to, I'd like to introduce Brent, by the way. And I'm just, in doing that, I'll say, he's going to go over, you have the slides, I know, he said to begin with, but just as a backdrop, I mean, why I said this before, but the backdrop of this, our last year fiscal, you know, something fiscal, you know, fiscal year is now, right? A fiscal year 20, or in the spring of 2020, there were no MCAS exams, because we were no longer in school as of March 16 of 2020. So from 20, March 16, 2020, to the end of last school year, if you count all of these, last school year was only 170 days, the average student in Kentucky, who attended school more frequently than all, most all other public schools in our area, the average student who was in class just two days a week, that means they were about 46% of the days possible. That includes when we made the transition, where the elementary went back every single day, and that case you could, that's how, that's how much face-to-face time they had. But they didn't take the exams, AP exams got taken at the beginning of May, and they got scheduled, beginning of May is like the first two weeks, but then MCAS sometimes it's in March, I'm sorry, sometimes April, sometimes in May. So not surprisingly, Kentucky had more days in, but even without us having more days in face-to-face, the suspense is not going to kill you here. The scores went down, but we fully expect, expected that to happen. But to that extent, the state in their least of this pointed out several, four things. One was, it was an off-year exam for sure, students weren't off, some districts weren't in school at all. The other part of it is, they, the state's struggling, do not, don't even try to compare one school to another school. It's really hard to do. And the third point is, when they look at these, and they look to see how cohorts of students did, a cohort of students is grouped on a group of students, so four of you who all scored similarly, you're not in the same district, you could be in any district, but you all scored similarly for the past six years on the MCAS test, and even within that group, you would be predicted to score the almost identical this upcoming year, but the variation that state saw was so great, it was unpredictable. So what Brent's about to go through are all of our results. It's the reason why the school committee exists. It's curriculum, it's performance to see how we're doing, and I think the big takeaway is, okay, during the pandemic, where do we see strengths? Where do we see areas of improvement, and where are we moving forward? So with all that, Mr. Conway, I'll let you take it over.
Thank you. There are 57 slides in this. Mr. Markins has explicitly asked that I spend about three minutes on each and every slide.
Well, I was hoping for more.
We're throwing stuff now.
So, I will not do that. There's a few slides we'll pause at, we'll point out a few key things. The information will be posted on our website for people to see. There's nothing here that is not public information anyways. I'm not sure the AP results are necessarily public at this point, but they're not barcoded, so all this information is generally out there. Where I will, we'll point out a couple of things district-wide. There are breakdowns school by school, we won't necessarily go into those details, but there are some slides where it talks about some of the next steps, and you'll see some themes, and if you look through those, you look through the school improvement plans, you'll see some, a lot of connections from what you see here to there as well.
Can I just make, so you just touched upon what I wanted to comment on, is that I really appreciated looking at this information with the responding, like, this is what we're doing, this is what we have in the works, this is what we've been working on. Like, I really appreciated that, because I think that context helps understand, we have weaknesses. Last year made it more glaring, perhaps, but we also have kind of our eye on the endgame and how we're going to get kids to be better.
So this is similar to reports. We didn't do one last year, I'm sure didn't have any to do. This is presented a similar way that you've seen the last couple of years. So there's broken up into five categories in these slides, so it's a very different accountability system, we'll talk about that just briefly. The reporting categorization of schools, then we talk about the MCAS results by district, by school, and then the AP results. The state accountability system, there really isn't any this year. That's the short summary. The MCAS was given as a way of giving us a baseline of data to move forward from, and I know some members have expressed their disdain for doing the MCAS, why do we have to do it? They don't, it does give us a common data point to have discussion around, and there is value in that, but again, it's in context of all other aspects. If this was the sole data point that we made decisions on, I'd say that's ill-advised. I do want to talk about this slide, because it does put a lot of things in context. There are no 2020 scores. There will be no accountability ratings this year either. Grades three through eight, we heard a lot about opt-outs and people, there's no such thing as an opt-out, it's actually considered a refusal to test, and that there were going to be widespread protests against it. The state had a 96% participation rate. It is generally 98% to 99%. In the district, we were over 98%. So that did not come to fruition as much as we heard. ELA across the state, or meeting and exceeding dipped slightly from 2019, however, eighth grades saw a bigger decline. That's across the state. Nothing real alarming, we sort of saw that. Our results generally matched the state's. We saw those same peaks and valleys when we were the state. Grade 10 actually saw a huge increase in statewide proficiency rates. Grades three through 10 in math, much more pronounced drop in proficiency rates in math, and we, I think we talked about this in the spring, that we anticipated this would be the case, as is the case without math this time. So we're talking about 33% proficiency rates across the state in grades three through eight. Growth scores, student growth percentiles, the statewide growth percentile is always 50, and everything works off of that, and if each individual student or class or school is anywhere between 40 and 60, that's generally a pretty good indication of growth. They calculated growth differently this year, and probably wisely so, because they wanted to show the impact, much as Dr. Bartholomew was just talking about, that the pandemic had, and they calculated it differently. The average growth scores were in the 30s across the state, so when you see individual student growth scores, or you see schoolwide growth scores that are in the 30s, that actually mirrors a statewide trend. And as I said before, this sets a baseline for accountability moving forward, so it's important now that we, here we are, now we know where we are moving forward. I'm not going to go into these, this is the accountability system. These slides remain here, these set the targets moving ahead. There are links in here to our profile on the Department of Education's website, both the district accountability and the MCAS results. This is what that criterion reference stuff looks like, and then they categorize schools. That's not being done either. Certainly, we see these articles in the Boston Globe and the Herald and so forth, top schools, this and that. It's not using this data, I can assure you of that. So this is not information you really need to worry about. Now we get to the MCAS results, and what we've done in the past is we've shown you three years of data, because we always look for trends and threes. Of course, this is a funny three-year data trend. You see, it goes from 18, 19, to 21, because we don't have the 20. And we had some dialogue in our subcommittee meeting around showing the change column, so you see ELA on the left side, math on the right. The change column is the change from our 21 results to where we started from in 2018, and I realize there's only one MCAS year between, but more or less, when we talked about the swings that went up and down, and you look at where we landed, if you look at the grade three to eight, if I were to summarize our results across the district, we had made some gains in 2019, we've essentially just sort of went back to where we were in 2018, and that's where we're picking up from. But in some grades, particularly some of the earlier grades, we actually saw some pretty steep increases from where we were, and I think that speaks to some of the work that's been happening at some of the lower grades, so. And the same in math, as it works out.
I'd make a commentary just on that, where if we did not have some common curriculum that's now in place, that we put in place in 2018, those changes would have been staggeringly low.
So using this graph, I would think that we could, because you're comparing grade five, but it's different populations of kids in each day, so really taking a look at diagonally-
So you can certainly do that.
And show some of the growth-
Yep.
Or not growth.
Well, and the problem is, is that those are cohorts, now it's a different test and a different, so there's no one single measure to look at this data in doing that. It certainly is another approach to look at cohorts, but generally, when you want to look at cohorts, what you actually do is you look at the student growth percentile, because then that compares around their prior performance, and it's the same group of students, and it's measured on the new test. This is the science, technology, oh, I'm sorry.
I saw minus 18 by the eighth grade on the EL.
Very similar to statewide, the eighth grade was the one individual that saw a tremendous plunge.
Yeah, and does the state have a, any kind of, you know, like, two or three mutual reasons why that happened across the state?
Some theories, this was half the questions, is normal. We recognize there were probably two, two articles or two components of that that were pretty challenging, that I think the writing component was a little out of character for what students would have expected, and that's pretty clear that that would have impacted kids across the state, so I don't, I mean.
All right, I'm not going to ask you to guess.
And then, this is district comparison to state average, so if you want to see how we did compared to the state, and basically, you see in the first two columns, we're talking about the percentage of students who scored proficient or above, and then in the right-hand columns, you see the growth percentile score. So similar growth percentiles, Kentucky's in the green, fairly similar, except actually in 10th grade, we far exceeded some of the stuff in the state, and you can certainly see that over here in the difference. So our earlier grades do much better, a little bit of dip in grade six, seven, eight, and then at the high school level, grade 10 did exceptionally well.
Can I ask the reverse of that? That, why plus 18?
You know, I think part of it is, we have a writing lab class, which makes a difference for a lot of our kids. It closes a lot of gaps, we see, for kids earlier on. I think that, you know, continues to do pretty well. Our students did well last year.
Good.
And then you see this is the same slide, but it's for math. So even though we had some concerns about the dips in scores in math, we actually did better than the state in almost every grade level. And the growth scores, when you look at Penn Tuckett, even in the grade levels where we, our percentages weren't high, our growth scores were actually much higher than the state. In particular, at the middle school, where we were concerned about the performance, but compared to other students, they actually did pretty well. So all good stuff. You know, overall, pretty good information about where we are. And it puts it into a larger context and perspective. And then you see that in science here too, biology with us doing quite well. This is school by school. This data is here, this is public information. You can see grade by grade by school. We go through this data with the principals. You'll see, as Bagnell starts to talk about areas of strength and focus areas, these are things that are reflected in their school improvement plans. So we do this at a school-wide level, we do it at a district-wide level, and then they bring it back to their schools and have this dialogue.
How much impact does having the district-wide programs have on any of these scores? Like.
Well, all the buildings have some programs, right? And in some situations, some of the programs, the students take alternate assessments, so it wouldn't necessarily impact the numbers in the same way. So all schools have some form of specialized program, and I think at the end of the day, it kind of balances out for the most part. But, you know, it ebbs and flows a little too. But that's also, we also look at growth scores. So, you know, students may not be quite proficient yet, but they can have good growth scores. And some of the analysis that we do in some of our programs, the growth scores for some of our programs are some of the highest in the district. So that means programs are very effective.
And I'll just put up one. We sit down with teachers, we go student by student. And a lot of the principal meetings I have with them, their goals, and they're talking about meeting a certain percentage of increases, growth, because we recognize that some students, their part is here, their target of the cohort is here, their super reach is here. And for some students, that super reach still does not put them at grade level, but as they get there, that's a big win. Ultimately, we're responsible for making sure they get here. So you're gonna have to hit that stretch group goal consecutive years. But again, I think the principals have been very, very good this year in recognizing that this is, we need to use this data, some of this data, a lot of the follow-up assessment data to make sure all children are being, like, just say 80% will be to exceed. It's great, but what about the 20%? Because those typically, exactly, some of the students you're talking about, Chris that, that they, those are the students we need to show the growth, let's not get, let's talk about growth.
So this page, and some of the areas of strength, and you know, you see a lot of focus on the literacy, both with wisdom and the early grades literacy framework that's being done too. We're also enhancing some of our math supports, in particular, some of the Eureka Square, which is a newer version that we're gonna pilot and use with some of our programs in particular. So we have some focus points around that. Here's Merrimack, which the MCAS is exclusively out of Donahue. And you see, again, a lot of the similar target points. In the middle school, we talked about some of their growth scores, in particular, actually being quite strong, and some focus points moving forward. They've done quite well with some of the lab classes to be able to fill some of the gaps. That has worked very well, and it's made an impact. You see that. And then the high school, and their percentages continue to do quite well, and show some really great growth scores considering. And the high school area is the strength. And then the AP results in summaries. So in summary, we did have 2020 AP results. Those students took them from home, on their computers, they took them. Well, in, or they came in, in some situations, there were two kids.
I was gonna say something, but actually, they were very different tests.
It was a different test.
Because there was like no multiple choice.
Yeah.
And it was all free response. And so in a way, you can't, I don't.
It's hard to compare. It is. Yeah. So the, and the 2021 ones were done in person. There certainly were dips in performances this year in 2021 across the state, and Penn Tuckett reflected those. Some places we didn't reflect it, but we did well. In other places, it was maybe a little more pronounced. In general, though, classes with higher enrollments had sort of lower average score than the state. And there's a lot of different ways you can look at AP scores, and we'll sort of show those a little bit. But we also have a greater percentage of students scoring three or higher in some of those too. We're continuing to focus, and you heard Mr. Seymour talk about the various options we have for students to have, more rigorous coursework. AP is an option. Some of our students choose early college or dual enrollment, which is what that is, or the true early college program, which students spend half the day at Northern Essex, they're dual C's. So there's really like three different types of pathways kids can get access to some of these more advanced coursework. And we, one of the things we'll do, and you'll see it as we move ahead, is there's two main things here. AP classroom, it's always, it's existed for a long time. Their website, in 2020, they did a whole remat, they had to, lots of different resources. And it becomes a tool that we can really utilize now to do more formative assessment and then target some of the needs. That's not something that was always done. Teachers had to come up with their own assessments and do some of that in AP. Now we're able to do that, and the teachers all have that built into sort of their repertoire to use this year. The other thing that we recognize is we have some newer staff who are teaching AP. We probably need to update our training with some of the AP. And there's two different options we'll be looking at to give those teachers some updated AP training. So, Mr. Hodges?
Emily said something tonight that kind of triggered a question for me. And if a 12th grader is not taking 12th grade English but has opted to take AP, or has opted to take the college composition course, what exactly are they missing out on?
They're just taking that in place of.
Because, I mean, there's a jump in the curriculum that is unfulfilled in the 12th grade English that, and I'm not complaining about any of this, I love hearing about it. But it seems to me, based on your question, something's missing. They're missing out on something.
No, that's just their. That's their English class.
I guess what you're saying, Dick, is 12th grade, I don't, but, right. Traditionally, with 12th.
Yeah, American literature.
American literature, junior year.
Eleven.
So.
Okay. So what you're doing is taking, so is what you're taking in the early college or what you're taking at AP, is that providing the exact same materials? It's not, it's a completely different course. But there's a prelude for what you need to know going into secondary, I would say. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Versus, Dick, I would say, when you look at something, when you're doing literary elements in middle school, ninth grade, 10th grade, like, you can't skip over that. Like, you need to know what that is, you can take those courses, any of the high school courses, and understand what's happening.
Okay, thank you.
So the AP science results, you know, they're all in here. So basically, there's two slides that show data as we go through all these results. So the first slide, it all follows the same pattern. This is all just last year's results comparing to the Massachusetts average. So you see the number of Penn Tuckett students, the average we had last year, the percentage of students scoring a three-plus, the Massachusetts average comparing, so this column compared to that column, and the Massachusetts percentage of three-plus. So you can see in some spots here, we're a little bit below in some of the science, and then in some of the others, like computer science, we're above in some spots as well. Biology continues to be a really big course for us, and we actually just updated our biology AP text to give them a more updated tool. And then the second slide, and I won't go subject by subject, but I'll show you the pattern. We do a three-year comparison. Again, I think it's hard to use the 2020, it was kind of a different test in 2021, you know, especially when we start talking about the science classes which have AP labs, and they're doing, those are seven and a half credit classes. That is a lot of time and effort, and last year, they couldn't do anywhere near that amount of time. So it's gonna impact those results, no doubt. So you can see some of those trends going from 19, 20 to 21. You can see some of those dips. But in some cases, you know, like our computer science, the kids do it better. These are some next steps. I won't go into all of them. You'll see some of the things, AP classroom is something that all of the AP teachers have recognized as an incredibly valuable tool, that has never really quite had the dynamic aspect that it has now. Like, we talked about the double blocks. Having those back in place are going to be really important this year. Math AP results, so a little bit of a mixed bag, a little bit our statistics, the kids did really pretty well this year. And some of the more advanced calculus classes, the kids really did pretty well, but we had a dip in performance in some of our AP results. And then you can see a three-year change from year to year as well. It is funny how in some of the subjects, some of the subsegments, we can't get scores and information that AP's not reporting in any way. I don't know why.
Can you explain that?
Why we can't get them?
So, like, it doesn't break it out by?
Yeah, it's not, it wouldn't give us the information in some years. I can't explain it. We asked for an explanation, and they said they didn't have it that year.
Because that was actually a comment I had, is that a few of the other APs, you kind of went into more specifics as the area, but they don't.
So this year, they didn't give some of it.
Because I think that would be helpful.
I agree, and they wouldn't give it, especially in the global languages. We were looking for multiple aspects of the global languages, they didn't have it. I think it's, they designed the test a little differently, is what happened. So we can see calc AP enrollment is actually up this year, and statistics AP continues to really be a pretty strong performance for us. We are in the process of reviewing a new AP calculus book and curriculum resource, which I think is probably ready for an upcoming course. Those are pretty easy to purchase on that lens because it's one classroom.
Great.
Yep.
So, I'm sorry I'm asking all these questions, but when you have kids at this age, I think it's more meaningful. The AP, how does that, how might that impact the kids who, you know, they're pretty much as a process to get to the calculus, the AP calculus session? So if the prep work in pre-cal for Algebra II, if the fundamentals aren't necessarily there, are they all of a sudden gonna hit calculus and have holes? And how do we, as a district, make sure that there aren't those holes?
Yeah, I mean, mathematically, obviously, we look at our MCAS results, our 10th graders are doing, you know, fairly fine, you know, we catch, they get to where they need to be. We certainly have a fair percentage of students who are taking more advanced coursework and doing fairly well. You know, when we look at our district-wide data and their common assessments, it's really the, like, the CP level classes in Algebra II where the kids are struggling, whereas all the others, the kids are performing at a pretty good level and prepared to take more advanced courses.
But it is going to be curious to see nationally what the AP outcomes are.
A trickle, two, three years from now.
Bath in particular, teaching such a key of the piece, and what you think of both the theory and the proofs that get done. And if you only, if you didn't get all of those, and those are the, especially getting everybody. So if you didn't get all of those, and you're trying to prove that many, many doubt, I've gotta believe, it doesn't matter for our students.
Yeah. You know, it's interesting, when you look at seventh and eighth graders, the percentage of students who scored advanced on the MCAS, for instance, that didn't change much. So in theory, you think maybe those are the most likely kids, and they're still there.
That's innate, not taught.
Oh, they take advantage of what's taught. Yes.
Or, but I think there's a certain amount that is innate.
The teams, they took the stuff that they were given, they're able to digest it.
And the history results too, so some swings up and down. These are some of our most popular AP. We have a lot of students who take, we run three sections this year, AP Psychology and US History is still popular very much too. So you can see sort of a three-year, you know, certainly dip with the history as well. And then these are spelled out a little bit more, I don't know what you need to work on. You can see, you know, the 2020 was only one document-based question in some of those tests, so. And then the history AP summary and the psychology, so it sort of continues on, and then the AP government as well.
Now, Brent, this will be accessible to the public.
Yeah, me, I'm getting it all.
I wanted to see it, I already see it twice.
So on the really good news front, our AP English results seem to be immune from anything related to COVID. And our students did exceptionally well, and we run multiple sections of these. So much the way the college offering of literature and composition, Mr. Hodges, we also run AP literature and composition, and our students are doing exceptionally well. And you can see from their scores, 90% of those 31 students scored a three-year above. And the three-year results just continuing to plot along the way. And then we have some next steps along with that. And this is an area in particular, we have a few students who do some studio art that feels a little bit more like an independent study, but they do a tremendous amount of work. And I think this is an area of global language where we're having some broader discussions about the bigger picture here. And we can see, over the course of a couple of years, we have some things to address. The big focus here is really both, we use the Apple Data Assessment, we use that for our 12th graders, which is a good assessment to use for the end of the year, we use it for the SEAL by Literacy. Those results match up pretty well as far as strengths and weaknesses with the AP. So that's been pretty helpful, and it tells us what we know are the things that we need to work on. And they align to the things we already identified a year ago. In particular, interpersonal speaking is really the greatest area of concern in both areas. The students simply need to speak more. And if at some point, if it was something we could ever consider for more or more advanced students to return to international travel, I would highly encourage that we return to that. That is how these students get to that level. They have to live it. Global language, next steps, really focusing on that target language of 90%. When we walk into a year-three Spanish class, there should be almost no English written anywhere in the room except on the fire exit, and very little English spoken. And if it is, it's been repeated in Spanish or in German. And then AP Studio, enrollments back up a little bit, which is great. And then these are just overall next steps. We outline these for K-6, outlining them. Having our literacy instructional coach, having our secondary instructional coach, and having our special education program coordinator, having those three positions are, it has been, what a difference in the last two months. And there were so many things we're doing, where I would say, how did we get all this done? And then I realized that a lot of this, we just didn't do, or we didn't do well. But having them has just been so instrumental.
The feedback I got when I go through the faculty teachers, they loved having them there to bounce ideas off of, or when they were working on their goals, them knowing that they're there for supportive, they're not evaluating, they're not, but they're helping them look at different ways that they could put together a goal that has proper action steps that are gonna be impactful. Good method of joke, where that is, it's been awesome.
We do, obviously, there are observations where administrators go through and observe teachers. Several years ago, we started instructional rounds or instructional walkthroughs. We did not do them last year, we obviously didn't do them the last half, so it's been almost a year and a half without them. They're very valuable in the sense of aggregate data around what we see from instructional patterns. We begin again Thursday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Today's Tuesday.
Right.
Still Tuesday. And so we begin those again tomorrow. And that includes Dr. Bartholomew not participating in those, central office staff participating in those. So we split up into multiple buildings on a single day, and we spend about 90 minutes and we collect data. It's in aggregate, and it helps drive the department chair meetings, the grade level meetings, and it's this information. So we look forward to returning.
So just to differentiate between some of the things that we just mentioned, like, evaluations happen, actually, the principals and assistant principals with the evaluations. The walkthroughs are particularly important because when you do a walkthrough, you have been on that. being like, I, I was a teacher, I was in a classroom, I know what a good teacher looks like. So when you go into a room, there's some areas, things that we're looking for, and we fill out what we saw, what we didn't saw. And when it's done, we come back, we have a conversation about it. All that data sits somewhere, and then we can make generalizations saying, hey, this data is showing us that here's where things are going well, and here's some areas we can improve, exactly what Mr. Collins has said. Those are things you can share them with the team leaders and with the department chairs, and well, this is what we're seeing. It's, you have people that have, you certainly have skin in the game, but we're not coming in there every single day. This is, we came in once, we're coming twice, three, four times over the course of the year collectively in that school. You have many different administrators, and this is what they're all seeing. So it's very valuable data to have objective, different sets of objective eyes looking at classrooms.
Couple of things to point out, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school. We, so our middle and high school will begin a professional study on grading practices using a Grading for Equity as a book, book study. There are thirty-five staff members between the two buildings on campus here, and Robin Dougherty, Dr. Dougherty, our secondary instructional coach, will be leading that, which is, I think, a great thing for us there. We're going to be putting out information this week about some after-school tutoring. It'll be available to elementary, middle school students for free, all part of some of the Esther Funding Grants that we have. That, we hope to get started in November, and that'll run all the way into March. So twice a week, ELA or MAP tutoring for those who are behind. This, in our curriculum review cycle, we'll begin our science curriculum review. So both Dr. Dougherty and Science Department Chair Pam Endyke will be co-chairing that along with myself, and we'll do that K to 12, much like we did ELA previously, and we did social studies previously. So all of those are coming. Those are the types of things that we're working on and putting forward in the coming days.
Can you explain or define grading equity? Because I'm thinking if we all took a test, I'll tell you, I'll probably get one of the lowest math scores here, and I won't be getting the same as the rest of you.
So, and so Grading for Equity is thinking in terms of how do we give students feedback rather than a letter or a number? What does feedback look like? And how do you give students that feedback based on what they need so that they can grow and become a more competent, be able to demonstrate their competency? So it's less about your average or your, the number that you scored, and it's about what do we expect? How do I give you feedback so you can grow towards that expectation?
I like that.
Helping secondary staff to have that mindset about grading.
Yeah, I like that, but what happens to the GPA?
Well, GPA still exists, and grades still exist. But how you give students opportunities to continue to show that they know what they know?
Okay.
There's, there's an exercise I always did as a middle school and high school principal, and it was giving the teachers all set of grades, identical. So twenty is a twenty assignments, some homework, some of them tests, some of them quizzes, some of them reports, identical scores. But each person in the room had a scenario where their grading practice was this, their grading practice was that. So everyone had a different grading practice. And as a result, with those same identical scores, on the same identical assessments, a person's grading would range from an A minus to a D plus, but it's the same result. So it's, it's a philosophical approach to make sure that you're not having that huge range. Some range, sure, you could see that be the case, but things like extra credit, opportunities to make out work, zeros, the debate of the zero, all of that comes into play.
And then some elements for the high school, and you'll see here as the last bullet point, re-engaging with the NEAS accreditation process. In particular, probably really doing that full process when we're in one building, but beginning some of those programmatic structure reviews and self-studies. We think that's, we have stepped away from NEAS probably about ten years ago now or so, and I think it's, it's time, we've had this discussion with a few folks, and we think it's very much time to re-engage in that process.
Chris, something you said jogged my memory, that I think in the spring, the high school was looking at, what is a Kentucky graduate, what does it look like, what vision is a graduate? Where, where is that in the process? Because I don't think we've heard.
So the vision of the graduate.
As a parent, as a school community member, I haven't heard anything.
So the vision of a graduate is, is an element of NEAS, and we had begun that without necessarily doing formal NEAS accreditation process. And I think what we want to do is revisit that going through the actual process at this point, and have it become a more meaningful process than what we were able to do in the midst of, you know, the craziness of the end of the school year.
But how, how might that impact current students? And I'm going to use a specific example of a Kentucky graduate has to have a computer class, quote unquote.
Yeah.
Come on, seriously.
And those are the things that we would be interested in.
I don't think that that's a necessary thing, because they're doing it in every single aspect of their learning right now.
So what's in the weeds with that specific, what we're already addressing in our meetings?
And those are some of the things that we talked about moving into a new building, what's necessary, what isn't necessary, what is possible as well.
What does the state require, what do we set, why do we set?
That's all I have here.
I don't see anything about language, and that seems to be an area of concern, both at the middle school, the accessibility to it.
Yeah.
And then at the high school. You know, I've shared my own concern with the language program several times, and I just want to know what the plan is in place for languages going forward.
So these are the next steps for language, and the entire department is going to partake in professional development that's a little more extensive than what we might do for individual departments in particular. We have several new staff members in that department as well, so it's an opportunity to sort of refocus some of the work around that professional development. So we're going to utilize it outside resource to help with that. We had started the work of really understanding the actual standards, which are part of those AP memes as well, and that goes back to that sort of basis of what, what should global language look like from an instructional standpoint? We have some growth that needs to occur, but I think that's where we're going to target some of that work. And in particular, I think we have to talk about what does AP language look like? Is there that much of a student desire for it, and is supported in the manner that it deserves to be supported? Or, you know, if there's just a few students who need to do it, could that be done through a VHS opportunity rather than a classroom? So those are the things I think we have to look at, but when we look at successful AP programs, there are some common themes that we don't necessarily replicate, and those are the things that need to be done.
The, you just mentioned about you have new staff. I know that staffing was deficient to cover the number of classes and stuff. Are we back to the point where we're actually, the students who want to take it are in a class that is not thirty-plus kids in a class? Because I don't think that that's conducive to foreign languages necessarily.
So I don't have a precise answer, I guess.
My understanding is, so there's two classes that charge, Spanish two, Spanish two. Those are the only two classes that we're running, and we had it part-time. A teacher who was initially part-time would agree to take on two additional classes, or third additional class.
Two.
Two or additional classes, so that was able to absorb all the students. So I don't think there's students missing. Those two classes are big, I don't know if they're finished, but I think they are. They might, they might be.
But if part of our goal is the conversation part, the more kids are in class, the less opportunity.
Absolutely agree. Yeah, so, so the reason why we don't have an additional teacher, not because we don't have, we'd love to have.
They didn't exist.
Are we ongoing looking for a new teacher, or have we pulled the post, or where's the satisfaction? I hope those classes don't.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking, we've pulled the post for now, because we, once we sort of made a decision to regroup kids and start them that way. Not opposed to revisiting that for the second semester to implement a change if necessary.
And I have, I have received some, so you can have international teachers up in the body to teach. My experience is that it's, it's one to be sensitive to that. It's really, really, really hard to know what you're going to get, but I received a candidate who was a candidate who was looking for a position, saw the posting previously, wasn't ready, had her stuff together, it's just a challenge. It's not a pool, go in that direction. A big part of it is how do the students feel? How do the teachers feel that's going, if that's going forward? You can post, maybe you don't post for full-time, maybe you post part-time, work full-time, see what you can get, because you might find someone who wants to take those two classes and take those Spanish two's off.
I'm going to survey the students and staff.
I think the high school and the school of both, the high school, I think, was working on it. I know we were just talking to the staff, sure, we want, I don't know if they've done the students yet, but I know that's something I did ask them to do. But that's going to dictate what we do for.
Did Chris leave?
Yes, Chris had to leave.
And that's all I have?
Pete, thank you so much for all that work, you did a lot. So we're supposed to go into executive session, and it's just about eight-thirty, so you have to vote.
Yes, could I please have a motion to extend our meeting by fifteen minutes?
Second.
All in favor? And now can I please have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So I have to say why?
What?
You have to say why.
Oh, executive session to conduct, I have it all.
I know. I'm just reminding you.
To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, which inducts collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
So moved.